Anyway, I want to thank everybody for coming. This is a special meeting of the ad hoc committee on police reform. What we, and I'm joined today by my colleague and dear friend Mitch Englander, and also somewhere roaming around these chambers is Marquise Harris Dawson. There he is, I see him. Marquise Harris Dawson is here. And, because Mr. Coretts is gonna be over here. And, I'm fading fast, but I'm gonna do the best that I can. I think I caught something last night or the day before. But what we wanted, a commitment that we made, was that, to the residents of this city, is that we were gonna have a conversation about police reform, the relationship that we have with the police department. As a government, we recognize that there is a sector or folk within the community that believe that we could have a better relationship, or that the relationship that we have with law enforcement is not as good as it could be. And I personally believe that as government, it is our responsibility to try to make that relationship better. And the only way that I believe that that can happen is if we have a very straightforward, honest conversation. We have to build trust within the community, and the way to do that is to engage in what I believe to be a substantive conversation. We're very fortunate today, and we thought we'd try to start this out on a positive note. And we have a representative or the co-chair of a task force that was put together by the former president of these, United States President Obama. And we thought maybe we would have former Chief Ramsey, and our Inspector General, and Mr. Tefank, and others come up and talk about this report. And it's my understanding that we, as a department, have incorporated some of the things that are in this report into our plans. So we just thought we would begin this conversation. Eventually, we have to get to a point where we'll be having a conversation about making adjustments to the Board of Rights, how discipline is dealt with. But when you have this opportunity, we wanted to take advantage of having a full conversation about everything. And so that's what we're gonna do today. So I think we start off by, if I could get the clerk. What I'm gonna do today is I think we're gonna deal, I'm not going to call on the city departments to come up and report on some of the requests we made of them. I wanna take advantage of this opportunity to talk with Chief Ramsey, and I really wanna focus on the Obama report. And if there's anyone from the audience that wants to give testimony, of course, they are welcome. But Mr. Clerk, that's what I wanna focus on. And then, at the next meeting, we'll figure out how to incorporate other concerns. But this first meeting, I want it to be more of just a back and forth, and a dialogue, where the members of this committee could ask whatever questions they have. I want to, for those that are listening, to indicate that we will have these meetings at different times of the day. Like, today, we have one at 6:00. We wanna do the best we can to at least afford folk the opportunity to come here from work. But I don't want people to think that every meeting that we have is gonna be at 6:00 PM. There will be some that'll be done in the afternoon, and some that will be done in the morning. So if you would read those item or that item, then I'm gonna ask the Chief and the other members to come up, and we'll start off by listening to them. So go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Richard Williams, City Clerk's office. Item number one, pardon me, is motion, Weston Harris Dawson, relative to a request to the Los Angeles Police Commission and the Los Angeles Police Commission's Office of the Inspector General to report with a presentation of the review of National Best Practices Report issued by the Inspector General on May 2nd, 2017, and adopted by the Los Angeles Police Commission with respect to the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing issued by the Obama Administration in May 2015, and the Police Executive Research Forum's Guiding Principles on Use of Force in March 2016.
Okay, so where's Chief Ramsey? If I could have, Sergeant, can we let him come up? And if, do we have our, if we can get our, Mr. Tefank come up, and Inspector General come up? I think this is what we'll, we'll start with, and we'll have each one of you just kinda give us an opening statement, who you are and your responsibilities. But I do wanna start off with the Chief, and I hope that you feel free to just take as much time as you need, and, you know, when did you get the call from the President or from the President's office? What was your charge? Who and how were the individuals selected that were on this task force? What principles did you deal with? Did you deal with, you know, use of force issues, recruitment issues? Just kinda walk us through that, and then I'd like to open it up for question and answers, and then we'll, after you, we'll go to Mr. Tefank, and then to our Inspector General. But why don't we start off with you?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you for having me here today. It's really an honor to be here in the city of Los Angeles. It's the first time I've been here in a couple of years.
Well, welcome, and I hope we gave you good weather.
It is a whole lot better than Philadelphia, believe me. So I wanna talk a bit about the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. I do have a half a dozen slides that I'm gonna go through very quickly. I'm one of the co-founders of 21st Century Policing Solutions, LLC. This is really an outgrowth of my involvement with the Task Force, as well as three other individuals who were also members of the Task Force that are part of our company. Roberto Villasenor is a former chief of police in Tucson, Arizona. Sean Smoot is a vice president of Napol, one of the police organizations in the country. And Ron Davis, the former director of the Cops Office, and was also executive director of the Task Force. And basically, we came together to make sure that we could provide some support as departments move forward, to try to improve police policing in their respective jurisdictions. Let me tell you a little something about myself. Next slide there, just personal background. I've been in law enforcement for a long time, 47 years altogether. I'm a native Chicagoan. I began my policing career in the Chicago Police Department. I was 18-years-old as a police cadet when I started, 1968. I hate to say how long ago that was, but it was a while. I served in that department from 1968 to 1998. I left as a deputy superintendent of police, and I left to take the job as police chief in Washington, DC. I had the honor of serving in Washington, DC for nine years as police chief, '98 to '07, during some very interesting times that were taking place in our country. I retired, actually, in 2007. I spent a year doing some consulting work, and even traveled to Iraq for about a three month period, looking at Iraqi police services as part of a presidentially-appointed commission. President Bush asked that I go over with a group of other chiefs, as well as military personnel. General Jim Jones was responsible for reviewing the military. I was responsible for reviewing police during that period of time. I had the honor of serving as past president of both the Major City Chiefs Association and the Police Executive Research Forum. You alluded to that report that Perf put out around de-escalation and use of force. I was part of that project as well. And of course, I was co-chair of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how that came about. You can see for yourself with some of the quotes there from President Obama. But clearly, especially 2014, 2015, there's a great deal of tension between communities, particularly communities of color, and police. It was after the Michael Brown, Eric Gardner case, that President Obama saw the need to put together a group of individuals to take a look at many of these issues and come up with concrete solutions. And I remember him saying specifically, he didn't want a report that would sit on a shelf for years. He wanted something that was actionable. And so he put together the task force. I got a call around Thanksgiving of 2014 from the White House, asking if I would serve as co-chair, which obviously I agreed to do. And then the White House pretty much picked the remaining members of the team, with the exception of two that I've had some influence in getting on the task force, because I thought they brought a wealth of experience and knowledge that would be of benefit to us. So there were 11 people altogether as part of it. We were given a very short timeframe.
Let me interrupt for one second, if I might. Can you kinda go through the 11 people, what kinda backgrounds?
Sure.
They had, who they were, how did, you know, I mean, were they, they all, well, you just let us know who they were.
Well, I can give you straight-
What, to the best ear?
Cedric Alexander was the deputy in charge of, the director, rather, of public safety in DeKalb County, Georgia. He's also a licensed clinical psychologist. I've known Cedric for a very long time, and he has a tremendous amount of insight into a variety of issues. But you notice one of the pillars, which I'll talk about later, is officer safety and wellness. And I thought that Cedric would be of value there. Jose Lopez, a young activist from New York City, fresh off the protest lines in New York around the Eric Gardner case. He was selected as a member of the team. Tracy Mears, a noted professor of Yale University Law School, someone who has written numerous books on implicit bias, constitutional policing. I've done a lot of work with Tracy. He was a member of the Harvard Executive Session from a few years ago. Tracy was a part of that as well, got to know each other pretty well, and she was a valued member of the team. Brittany Packnett, executive director of Teach for America. Brittany is from St. Louis, and she was deeply involved in the protests that took place around Ferguson back in 2014, and she was added to the team. Sue Rohr was a former chief in the state of Washington, King County, Washington State. She is now the director of training in Washington State. She is the one that coined the phrase, that we need a guardian rather than a warrior mentality. That was Sue Rohr that actually coined that particular phrase. Constance Rice, who you all know here in Los Angeles, civil rights activist, who was quick to tell you that she spent half her life suing the police department, and the other half supporting the department and helping it improve over time. Connie was part of it too. Sean Smoot, chief counsel of the PB and PA of Illinois. I first met Sean when I was negotiating a contract in the Chicago Police Department for supervisors. He sat across the table from me, and over time, we formed a very strong relationship and close friendship. But he brings a very important perspective, and that is the perspective of the union, which I'll talk about a little later. Brian Stevenson, a very well-known civil rights activist and writer, founder and executive director of the Equal Justice Initiative. And as I mentioned before, Roberto Villasenor, chief of police Tucson, Arizona, who retired about two years ago. You can see that there was a very diverse group. I didn't mention Lori Robinson, I'm sorry. She was the co-chair. Lori, George Mason University professor, University of Pennsylvania professor. She was the number-three person in the Department of Justice for years under the Obama Administration, a lot, wealth of experience and very, very talented. She was the co-chair of the Task Force. But that's the group, and you can tell from that, that, you know, one of the concerns I had, quite frankly, when I saw the list, was would we ever come together and agree on anything? Because we're all from such diverse backgrounds. But as you go through this report, there are 64 recommendations, 92 action steps. We got 100% agreement on every single one. There's nothing in this report that there's any member of the Task Force disagreed with, not a single thing. We worked all night with some of the language on some of the recommendations, but we got consensus on every single one, unanimous consensus. But that's the group. The President and his people put together the Task Force, and gave us a charge, and that was to have something on his desk, March 2nd, a draft. Because of scheduling, because of Christmas and New Years, we weren't able to have our first meeting until mid-January. So we didn't have very much time. So we decided to organize our thoughts around six key areas, what we call pillars. Get the next slide up. These are the six pillars of the areas that we thought we would address. Only one, well, actually two, are in any kind of order that we gave any real thought to, and that is pillar one, building trust and legitimacy. Because without that, you don't have anything else. And then the last pillar, officer wellness and safety, which we thought would make good bookends for everything we were going to do. Policy and oversight, technology and social media, which obviously has had a tremendous impact on us and policing society in general. Community policing and crime reduction. The reason why we didn't just say community policing is because there is still a school of thought out there that you can't have crime reduction with community policing, which is false. But we wanted to make sure that we incorporated both, so we could address them both. Training and education, and of course, as I mentioned, officer wellness and safety. Looking back on it, sir, if we had more time, we would've added a seventh, and that's recruitment and hiring. There probably are other areas that we could deal with, but I think there are departments across the country that are struggling in terms of recruitment, hiring, and retention of members. And that would've been one topic that we would've taken on, but we simply did not have the time. The next slide. So I'm only gonna talk about three of the pillars. One is building trust and legitimacy, which is, like I said before, it's really the basis for the other five. It's the foundation for the other five. When you talk about transparency, when you talk about accountability, legitimacy, and procedural justice, all these things are captured in the first pillar. And when we talk about procedural justice, which the next slide there, I'm gonna get into just a little bit more. This is something now that departments across the country are starting to pay close attention to. And basically, it's about respect, respecting the people that we serve. It's about people having a voice in the policing that occurs in their jurisdiction, making sure that it's free of any kind of bias, understanding why an officer is taking the actions that they're taking. But that's just not external. It also is internal, and we dealt with both, internal as well as external, procedural justice. Because the men and women in policing need to feel that things are fair for them too, whether it's an issue of discipline, whether it's a promotional process, whatever it may be, they need to believe too that they're gonna get a fair shake. And if there are issues in the department, they need to have a way in which their voice can be heard as well. So it's also, it's about the community, but it's also a very important internal part of improvement in the department, and getting a department to move forward is one. The next slide. The second pillar was policy and oversight. We had a list, if you go through the, through the report, some areas specifically around a policy, very specific policies. But one thing that I'd like to mention there, and it kinda segues into another pillar in a way. But it's also the role of the community, and getting the community more involved in the development of policy, training, oversight, disciplinary process, all those kinds of things. When I started my policing career in the 60s, you know, we looked at the community and said, "Well, you're the eyes and ears of police. If there's something wrong, call 911." Of course, it wasn't even 911 back in those days, but call the police, okay? If there were problems and crime spike, we just need to hire more cops, right? It wasn't about getting the community involved in anything. But for real community policing to take place, community need, they're real stakeholders, and they need to be able to have a role to play that goes beyond just being a partner in problem-solving, or, you know, going to meetings to talk about problems and issues and so forth. They need to have legitimate roles, which we have, sir, we'll talk about a little bit later on. The other thing that we mentioned in there was something that's very important when it comes to improvement, and that Centennial event review, it's much like in the medical profession, where if there's a surgery or some issue that goes wrong, they can sit down and discuss it in a way in which they're not held liable. We can't do that in our business, and we need to have the ability to be able to review many of these cases and learn from some of the mistakes that were made, so that they're not repeated. The next, please. Again, when I mentioned earlier about getting community more involved, we were very strongly in favor of civilian oversight in our discussions. I think that came as surprise to some of the activists and others that were part of that. They thought that those of us that were actually in policing would somehow resist that, but it makes sense to have some form of civilian oversight. Now, what we didn't do was get into specifics, because there are a lot of departments that have some form of civilian oversight. There is no one model that is necessarily the best model. It's up to each jurisdiction to decide for themselves what that ought to look like. But there needs to be some, some form of civilian oversight, in our opinion. So we didn't wanna get too much into detail. Some of the policies I mentioned there that community and civilian members can have some input on, and let me give one quick example. In Philadelphia, we were operating under something called collaborative reform. We had a use-of-force issue, officer-involved shootings. I had a bad spike in 2012. I read the cases. I didn't see anything criminal, but obviously, it was something that I needed to address. So I contacted the Department of Justice and asked if they would make us part of some new project they had called collaborative reform, where they come in and actually look at your department, come up with recommendations, you implement those recommendations. The difference between that and a consent decree is the court's not involved at all. But you can still push through reforms within your department. And they agreed to do that. Our mayor at the time, Michael Nutter, decided he wanted to create a small oversight board, which he chose the members to oversee our implementation efforts. We were developing new policies on use of force. I sent those draft policies over to this board for their review. And I was a little skeptical at first, as to whether or not that would actually, you know, make a difference or provide any kind of quality input. But believe me, it did. And a lot of it had to do with just the clarity of the directive. We use jargon and terms so much in our business that we think everybody understands it. But the reality is, many people don't, including some of our own members. And so by giving it to this group that took time and had us rewrite certain passages, we have a very, very good, clear use-of-force policy in the Philadelphia Police Department. That, I don't think that would've happened that way, had we not had that kind of involvement with the oversight group that Mayor Nutter had appointed.
Did you, did you see any changes once you instituted the new policies?
Yes.
Did things go down?
Our use-of-force went down.
If you could spend a moment talking about that?
Yes, sir. Our numbers of use-of-force went down, number of shootings went down. Just to go back a few years prior to that, in Washington, DC, when I took over as chief, I came out of Chicago. I didn't know much about Washington, DC, other than, you know, the federal part of it, I guess. But we had a tremendous problem with officer-involved shootings. In fact, the Washington Post ran a week-long series, and got a Pulitzer Prize as a result. And they called us the deadliest police department in the United States. Now, I don't know if that was true or not, but we were probably in the top two if we weren't the deadliest. It was bad. I mean, real bad. And it was bad because the department had let the men and women of that department down by not providing any training, not providing them with the kind of equipment to, less-than-lethal options that would be available to them. And so we were able to change that. Again, Justice Department came in, took a look, came up with recommendations. We put in new training, new policies. We had an 84% decline in officer-involved shootings, and to this day, those numbers have held.
What was that percentage again?
Eighty-four percent. Eighty-four percent reduction. Now, that's significant, and it's held.
Can you give us an example again of some of the things that you implemented?
Well, the training, well, policy was certainly a big part of it, because that department at the time had not updated its policies. They were operating on some directives from the 1960s that had not been updated. I mean, it was, it was not your typical big-city police department. They were behind in a lot of different ways. And again, not their fault, the leadership's fault. They just did not do the things that they needed to do in running the organization. So we updated policies, we updated training, we got involved in Reality Base, was called Reality Base Training now, which is scenarios, where officers just don't go to the range and fire at a target. They're actually given situations where they have to exercise judgment to resolve it. And part of that judgment is de-escalation. You know, you wanna try to resolve an issue using no force at all, if you can, and if you have to, the minimal level to be able to overcome any resistance that you have. But you put officers in situations where they have to actually make decisions in a training environment, and then you can correct it if it's, if it's not consistent with your policies. I think that had a lot to do with the reduction, because, and the police officers enjoyed the training. They enjoyed the training.
Did you get any blowback from the police unions?
No, no, sir. If anything, they were starved for the training. Yeah, they, you know, it wasn't their fault, it was the fault of the chiefs, it was a part of all those people that led that organization that just had not provided the resources. That's not the fault of the men and women of the department, but it is the responsibility of the leadership to change it and to correct it, and that's what we were able to do. So those are a couple of concrete examples of how those things can actually make a difference. Yes, sir. One thing that you'll see, and I just threw this in there, because number four is, pillar four, is community policing and crime reduction. And this is something that Ron Davis, in a way, he likes to explain public safety. He looks at it as, it's a co-production of public safety. That's the goal. It's not just the police, it's not just city agencies or other government agencies. It's, it's, it's community, it's other stakeholders, it's everybody working together to create a real safe environment for people and communities across the entire city. And he likes to refer to it as a co-production of public safety. And in order for it to become a reality, of course, the role of community has to be, we have to rethink it and get them more involved, and not just, again, being eyes and ears or a partner in problem-solving, but really being a stakeholder in the overall operation of a department, including the disciplinary process, training, and oversight.
With Chief, let me ask. When you were going through the task force, how did you guys incorporate the public into your hearings, and, you know, how were they, you know, how were they afforded the opportunity to give input?
We started off with what we call listening sessions. We had seven of them. We had a couple of them in DC, we had one in Cincinnati, we had one in Phoenix. We traveled around, and we invited some people to actually come in and present testimony. Others could submit written testimony. And we actually, because social media being what it is today, we actually were being livestreamed as we were having our hearings, and people could make comment and suggestions directly during the time the hearing was taking place. We had more than 120 people testify before us. We had about 150 or so submit written testimony, and then, of course, we had the people, the online folks. And we were able to take all this in, so that we had input. We had police, we had civil rights activists, we had major organizations coming in. We tried to have as wide a group of people as we possibly could have to come in and give us their opinion, and we did it around the six pillars. So one listening session was on building trust and legitimacy. Another was on policy and oversight. Another on community policing, another on training, you know? And that way, we kept it focused, because we didn't have enough time to allow it to just go off any direction it wanted to go off into. So we- So, we kept it very specific, and we brought subject matter experts in that really focused in that particular area, that particular field, and we brought people in that had, um, kind of real concrete, uh, comments and suggestions to make in those specific areas. So, we were able to get all that done within that timeframe, and then we got to work, um, behind the scenes, putting together the report that we would have to present to the, um, to the President. Um, and this, of course, last slide, I'm not going to bother to read it, but, um, it, it, um, kind of again summarized what the mission of the task force is really all about, and that pretty much is, uh, that's pretty much it, sir.
Okay, before we go to Richard, members, you, you have any specific questions for, uh, the chief? And we'll go back and forth, but I, uh, I'd, I'd like to, to hear, and I don't know if you guys want to wait, but I'd like to hear, you know, what our commission thought about this, what are we doing about it? It's my understanding we're trying to implement. So, you can ask questions now, or we can talk to, uh, Mr. T-Fank now, so it depends on you. So, if there's a question, just raise your, then, then, then why don't we hear? And, and Chief, again, thank you, and there will be questions later, but, Richard, why don't you tell us how, what we did, and where are we? And, uh, is there anything that we can do to kind of push this along, or are there problems? Just if you, you know, lay that out for us, and Mark will, uh, get your plate as well. So, go ahead.
Mr. President, members of the committee, Richard T-Fank, I'm the Executive Director for the Board of Police Commissioners. And the, uh, the Police Commission, upon receipt of the report and, uh, driven by the then-President of the Commission, Matt Johnson, uh, directed the Inspector General's office to take and look at the report and compare the report to where the LAPD stood on various topics that were covered within the report. The report that was prepared by the Inspector General came back to the Commission in May of two thousand seventeen, covered the various areas that the report identified, gave a status of where the department was at that particular time in those areas, with a number of recommendations of moving forward with that. We have had two reports come back from the department. We had one in September of two thousand seventeen, and one in, as recently, in January of two thousand eighteen. Status reports as to where they were in implementing the recommendations that were part of the Inspector General's report. Excuse me. Part of this report became the impetus to begin, uh, a number of, of changes within the department at the Commission direction and with the support of the department. That began the, the review and revision of the use of force policy, implementa-, implementation of de-escalation as a policy, implementation of training, as the Commissioner indicated, reality-based training, all officers went through a use-of-force training. A variety of those trainings came about as a result of this document, moving it forward, so it was building upon each part of this. I think, uh, the department is best placed to respond to where they are in the areas that have not yet been completed, but I believe that they are making good progress. We have them coming back in the month of April to give us another report, so they are being kept, uh, under the focus by the Commission to report back on the status of the various areas. Inspector General Smith would be best, uh, to present the report and the recommendations that came from his predecessor, then Inspector General Alex Bustamante, but the staff that prepared the report still works for the Inspector General and did a, a very good job with that report, taking the, the work that the, the Commissioner and, and the folks on the committee did, or the task force did, and then looking at where does LAPD stand in that? Where can we make improvements to measure up to that, and where are we now meeting the bar? And I think that has been the impetus of the Commission, is let us meet that bar. We might not agree with everything in there, but we certainly can meet the things that are, are doable for the LAPD.
Okay, mister, and, and I'd like to find out what it was that you didn't think was doable, but I want to go to Mr., uh, Smith right now, if I might. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening, Council President, Chair Wesson, Vice Chair Corretts, and Committee Members Englander and Harris-Dawson. Uh, Mark Smith, Inspector General of the Los Angeles Police Department, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present this very substantial-
Oh, let me stop you. Yes, some time ago, we were joined by Mr. Corretts, and I just did not, like I said, I'm not a hundred percent, Paul, don't think it was a slight, he's been here for the chief's entire presentation. Back to you.
Good, good evening to each of you, and, and again, thanks for the opportunity to be here and present this report to you. Uh, it's produced by the Office of Inspector General. Uh, as Mr. T-Fank said, the state of LAPD, as it relates to the recently issued guidelines that you've heard about, uh, from Chief Ramsey, and, and before I really start, I'd be remiss if I didn't just say one quick thing. It's an honor to be up here with Mr. T-Fank, of course, but also with Chief Ramsey. Uh, as someone, he, he mentioned that, uh, the task force took testimony both in written and verbal format, um, very, uh, was proud to be a co-author of some of the written testimony that was submitted to the task force in a prior life of mine when I was associated with, uh, a group called NACOL, the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, and we focused on that civilian oversight piece, that pillar number two. Uh, to be up here with you now is a great honor, so, uh, so thank you for that. Uh, I should mention, as I get started, I've only been in this position of Inspector General for about a month, and it bears importance for a couple of reasons. First, it means that I'm now a complete expert in really important things like finding the break room in my office, and, uh, I don't know, maybe knowing where to buy lunch. Uh, but more notably, it means that the extensive work that I can talk about, uh, tonight, uh, was completed by the very capable and impressive staff of the Office of the Inspector General, as Mr. T-Fank mentioned, under the leadership of my predecessor, Alex Bustamante, and it's, uh, important for me to highlight just, uh, the work of two, uh, people in particular, two police special investigators with our office, Chameleon Nagib, who could not be here this evening, and Julie Buckwald, who is seated at the audience. Uh, so, at the request of the Board of Police Commissioners, our report examined where LAPD stood in relation to the wealth of recommendations that came forth, uh, from the President's Task Force, as well as, uh, police executive research forums, uh, guiding principles on use of force. Generally speaking, our report found that LAPD had fully or partially implemented the majority of recommendations in some form, and that many of them were actually reflected by well-established practices already in place at the department. Other recommendations addressed some areas where the department was engaged in the process of taking steps at that time toward improvement. Of those, our report identified seven primary areas, again, seven areas taken from the task force and from PRF's report, uh, that were, uh, areas of focus that seemed to be of, uh, a greatest relevance to LAPD specifically, and ultimately to the public as well. What I've, I've done here, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to touch briefly on each of those areas, and just, uh, give you a sense of what the recommendations were that we produced, uh, in an attempt to help, uh, help the department. The first area, and you've heard some of these in Mr. Ramsey's presentation, is adopting procedural justice as a guiding principle. He's defined procedural justice for you already, I'll try not to, uh, repeat that. In furtherance of this fundamental principle, what we did is we recommended the department examine ways to incorporate procedural justice into all aspects of its operations. That includes the development of policies and procedures, the evaluation of its officers' performance, and the provision of information to members of the public. Additionally, we recommended the department conduct an in-depth evaluation of its own disciplinary system, including an employee survey, with the ultimate goals of maximizing understanding on the part of its employees, and minimizing disciplinary inconsistency to the extent possible department-wide. The second area would be preventing biased policing, and unsurprisingly, Mr. Ramsey mentioned this as well, many of the recommendations yielded by those two major reports have significant areas of overlap, and this one is certainly no different. One key component of implementing procedural justice is understanding and acknowledging human biases, both explicit and implicit. Implicit bias in particular has become a vibrant part of the national conversation on policing, particularly in the last five years and beyond. It's harder to identify and arguably harder to address effectively the more overt biases. Uh, and LAPD set about to conduct department-wide training on implicit bias that started about a year ago for every member of its, uh, of, of the department. While we strongly supported this effort, we just as strongly recommended, in our report, that the department continue conducting training on implicit bias for all employees into the future, and that it take the time to assess the effectiveness of such trainings, so adjustments could be made as necessary. We also recommended the department expand its policies related to biased policing to include things like, uh, anti-bias language on immigration status, housing status, occupation, and language fluency. The third area I'd like to touch on, uh, from our report is establishing a culture of transparency and accountability. In order to build and maintain trust between law enforcement and the community it serves, police agencies must establish a culture that genuinely and openly embraces principles of transparency and accountability. This is true even in the face of statutory and/or case law that simultaneously mandates confidentiality in certain circumstances. Along these lines, what our report did was, uh, was to largely complement LAPD's efforts to share things like their policy documents on their publicly accessible website, and to solicit input as, uh, on new policies as they are being developed. As far as our recommendations, we asked the department to continue expanding on the materials it makes available to the public, and enhance and systematize the feedback it was soliciting on new policies, including from department employees themselves. We also urged LAPD to continue the process of conducting community surveys about itself, sharing the results of those surveys publicly, and doing so ideally on an annual basis going forward. Now, significant note, as you may be aware, just last week, the Police Commission adopted a policy with a relation to this particular area with public input that requires the department to release video of serious uses of force within forty-five days of the incident, barring certain exceptions. Next area I wanted to touch on was collection and reporting of data. The task force went to great lengths to highlight the importance of publicly posting law enforcement data, including stops, arrests, detentions, and reported crimes, breaking that data down into relevant demographics, and effectively analyzing that data to learn lessons that could help shape future policy and practice. We found it meaningful to emphasize in our report the value of posting data in open or raw format to assist with future statistical analysis and to generally further the pursuit of transparency. Specifically, we recommended that LAPD expand on the types of data it was presently posting online, and update some of the data that was already there. We also recommended the department develop, in consultation with the Commission and with our office, plans on how to analyze the stop and search data it produced in order to identify and address issues of disparate treatment, implicit and explicit bias, and Fourth Amendment violations. As you certainly are aware, the California State's Legislature passed AB nine fifty-three back in two thousand fifteen. The enacted statute requires police departments, including LAPD, to collect and report on a variety of data points regarding stops of individuals, so there's a lot of overlap that's going to happen there. LAPD has been preparing itself to comply with this requirement, which officially takes effect on July first of this year. Fifth area is the use of force. In this obviously critical and often complex facet of law enforcement, the reports from the task force and from a police executive research forum, both call for department policies and training to emphasize the sanctity of life. Among the principles discussed were promptly rendering aid, de-escalating incidents whenever feasible, and avoiding the use of force against vulnerable populations if at all possible. One area LAPD has been highly proactive is in their efforts to educate families of people with mental health conditions on how to communicate effectively with law enforcement, particularly in crisis situations where law enforcement is called upon to respond. More effective and useful communication in this respect could lower the chances police will feel the need to resort to force against someone suffering from a mental illness, and in the extreme, it could save a life. We applauded LAPD's work in this area, and we simply recommend it on this front, that they continue exploring more trainings, forums, and additional ways to educate stakeholders out in the public. Sixth area out of seven deals with stops and searches. The guidelines issued by the task force reminded law enforcement of the importance and value of having police officers who stop someone identify themselves, verbalize the reason for the detention, as well as any ensuing search that might take place, and provide the involved person with written documentation of the encounter, and that could be as simple as a business card if no citation is, is issued or no arrest is made. The department's policy was already well-aligned with this particular set of directives. We said so in our report. In some of our office's other reviews of, uh, body-worn video and other cases, there were indications that the policy was not universally being followed in every stop. So, we recommended the department reinforce this policy, re-educate its people about it, and hold accountable those who deviate from it. They have since distributed department notice addressing the issue, and they plan to continue to check on compliance with this as they conduct body-worn video audits. The last area is community policing, again, one that Mr. Ramsey touched on. The idea of partnership and collaboration between the community and its police in order to identify and solve problems together is certainly far from new, but it can remain a challenge, particularly, uh, to infuse the philosophy, particularly throughout an organization as large as this one, and the goal is to infuse it in every structure of the organization, throughout every employee of the organization. LAPD has a pretty admirable network of programs that are focused on community partnerships. They include the Community Safety Partnership, which is aimed primarily at public housing developments, a group called HOPE, which is a program focused on connecting homeless individuals with services and shelter, and there are citizen police advisory boards that operate all across the city. But in addition to these very formidable efforts, and following guidance specifically from the task force, our report recommended that LAPD explore mechanisms for measuring and incentivizing community policing activities on the part of all of its officers in the field, beyond just those who are assigned to special programs that I mentioned. The department has started to contemplate what such mechanisms might look like. My office will be there to continue to monitor their progress in this area. Uh, so that was the seven main areas, I'll, I'll kind of wrap up and then try to take questions. So, taken together, those two major reports from the President's Task Force, as well from the Police Executive Research Forum, they address many big-ticket issues, at least that's what I call them, big-ticket issues. They call for long-term and oftentimes continuous solutions that will never reach an end. We found it encouraging to know that LAPD seemed to be far ahead of the curve with regard to a majority of those big-ticket items. What we hope is that the recommendations we made in our report can assist the department with their already ongoing efforts at perpetually improving in the areas that I outlined for you here. So, that's a basic of what our report said. Uh, let me pause there, I've talked a lot, and see if you have questions.
Okay, uh, anybody want to chime in at this point? Mitch, mister, mister Englander?
Briefly, first, first and foremost, Chief, thanks for being here, and, uh, the extensive work that you've, the lifelong work that you've actually done in putting in this, to get together this, uh, comprehensive analysis and report with recommendations, and I say lifelong, because you weren't appointed to this commission, and you simply undertook the work. It took a lifetime to get to a point, uh, of, of, of even getting your arms around and understanding these issues, and, um, so I thank you very much for, for being here in Los Angeles today to present that. I, I read the report, and I, in fact, I, uh, I read it and looked at the pictures. You look great in uniform in the, in the White House. There's a great photo in there. Um, the, the report was phenomenal and fascinating, and I think it's great with Richard, uh, Mr. T-Fank, thank you so much for bringing us up to speed on what our department is doing in reflecting to the principles, the six pillars, and, and by the way, I would argue that you didn't miss the seventh pillar. If we did all six, if every department, if every agency did all six well, you'd have no problem with recruitment or retention. So, um, that's my read of it. So, it wasn't missed, probably by design. Um, you nailed those six, and everybody will be, be beating our door down to be a Los Angeles police officer and stay here and not go to any other agency, uh, for any, for any department, for that matter. Mr. T-Fank, and, uh, probably, who quite frankly, I consider our secret weapon, ace in the hole, the, uh, the one that actually keeps not only us in line as a department and agency, but the backbone of the commission, quite frankly, to make sure that, uh, we're meeting all of those objectives and making sure that all of that information, recommendations get before the commission on a regular basis, uh, and that information flows directly to Mr. Smith and the, and turn it, the, uh, the IG's office, which is so important and critical. Um, I would add that in, the one thing in that report that may not have been there, um, is that the, any commission, and every commission should have an executive director, um, because I can't even fathom not having one. Um, in fact, it's something I've been pushing for our fire department. We've got a fire commission, civilian oversight, and they don't have a full-time Richard T-Fank, so we're trying to clone him as well. The, uh, to the department, we have a lot of work to do. We always have, and we always will. I, I've got a special, uh, I think, uh, unique experience in being a, a police officer, a reserve LAPD officer, where all the trainings that we're talking about, I also had mandated to maintain and keep up with. Um, and I will tell you, when, every time I walk out, we just recently went through implicit bias training, and, uh, I came in from that experience- bias training, and I came in from that experience the next day and the next morning into council. And I directly, I went to one of my colleagues, in fact, to Marquise Harris-Dawson, and I said, "You've got to know this professor that taught us," and of course he did. I'm trying to remember his name now.
Right.
Oh, my God. He was incredible. The experience, every single officer, and I'm talking about officers that have been on the force for two years and officers that have been on the force for twenty-two years, all walked out with the same impression. And those are what the things, the training, it's not just the experience. You can't, you can't find and root out in the hiring process those kinds of deep, deep details in somebody, but you can train if they're trainable. And so, a lot of the training that we're doing now, make no mistake, we always have to do more and stay on top of it. But this really opened up, from looking at all the reports, and I've read them all, really appreciate the IG's take on where we're at. I think that was key, to really look at where is the Los Angeles Police Department based on the recommendations that have come out of this White House study and report and recommendations. Really nailed it. And the fact in the follow-up, which is so critically important. One of the things, and you talked about three of the six, would love to, at some point, have a discussion of the other three as well. Especially as they, because we're in a new world as it relates to technology, we're in a new world as it relates to a lot of these changes that this report will drive, this is while it's the Twenty-First Century Policing Report, you could look back on this twenty years from now and it will be relevant. I mean, you really captured every single element and why it's so important to have trust and faith in our police department and the police officers themselves to have the trust and faith in their own agency. And I think that really covered a lot of it. So, I look forward, I want to thank the council president for bringing you here, Chief, and this discussion. I look very forward to moving forward in not just simply checking off boxes that we met obligations, but an ongoing dialogue and input. And I think it's very helpful to us moving forward in the city. So, thank you very much.
I got a question before I call on Mr. Kretz. You know, I think all of this, at the end of the day, Chief and Mr. Smith, Ms. Tefan, all goes back to trust, a lack thereof, and it would appear that there are, and there was a quote by the President that talked about, you know, you've, you've got to have trust or whatever everywhere, and if it's not, then it's a burden on the entire system. So, my question is, how do we do that? I mean, part of it is, we've talked about changes that we're going to implement, and you talked about changes that I'm assuming that have been implemented in other jurisdictions throughout the country. Do the people in the city of LA know that we've implemented these changes? Do we ask for their input? Do we let them know that we were going to try a new process? And I mean, I just think that that kind of dialogue is important, and hey, this is what we're doing. What do you guys think? Do we do any of that?
Yes, Mr. President, that's part of the process of having the Police Commission meetings, having the agenda published, the reports are all online for the public, opportunities for public to give input. We've done that recently with-
I mean, have we aggressively asked?
Yes, we have.
Hey, guys, we're doing A, B, C, D. What do you think?
We've done that more recently, when we did the process with the unmanned aerial systems, otherwise known as drones. Report with the policy was published for two weeks, give opportunity for public comment. When we did the recent piece on the release of police video, that report was published with a draft policy for three weeks, giving the public an opportunity to provide input and comment on those. I think that we are doing that. Can you always do it better? Absolutely you can, but we are doing that. We're pushing this information out. All of the department's policies and procedures and orders are available on the website. There's transparency there to see that. There's a very aggressive effort to do that. I think that's one of the things the department takes back to the federal consent decree as a part of that whole process and has continued to build on that. Now, it's making sure that our open data is out there, the stop data, et cetera, is accessible and transparent on the website. So, I believe there's an effort to push that out. Can it be done better? Absolutely. But again, you continually push it out, push it out, use social media, use Twitter, use whatever you can to get the information out to the public so they can have access to it.
Okay. Now, I want to, like I said, this is not, we're not going to vote on anything today. We're not going to make any recommendations at all today. We're going to digest a lot of what we've got from you, but I can tell you that I will be asking questions and of creative ways for us to make sure that more people know what we are attempting to do, so that they can say, "Hey, I think that's stupid. I don't think that's stupid." You know, we've got to figure out, there's always going to be a percentage of people that are just never going to be satisfied, but I think that we need to do what we can so that we feel satisfied, that we've done, you know, everything that we could. I read in the paper today where it relates to the shooting that occurred in Sacramento and the mom, God, poor, you know, I wanted to cry. Why didn't you shoot him in the leg? Why didn't you shoot him in the arm? Maybe somebody should have a conversation about that. Maybe people should understand why that didn't occur. So, I'm just saying, we've got to figure that out. I'd be willing to work with our police league and others to try to create a discussion around those things that make sense. Now, Mr. Kretz, I think you flagged me down, and then we have some of our chiefs and a couple of commanders here. I'd like to get a quick feel from you as to how you think this is going so far. Do you need any additional thing from the department or from the council or whatever to roll this out more? So, I want to let you know what I'm going to ask, so you could think about it. But I want to go to Mr. Kretz for now. Excuse me.
Thank you. I thank you all for your good work, Chief Ramsey in particular. It's an honor to have you here. My perception, and I don't know that it isn't widely shared, is that at one point, I think there was a perception of the city having made great strides in community policing and a very positive view of the LAPD. I think we're down from that high point after a number of controversial officer-involved shootings and incidents. The question is, how do we get back to that high point? Is it through community policing steps that we haven't taken yet? Are there significant best practices that we're missing? Are there transparency steps that we could be taking that we aren't taking? How much is it because we're missing some things that we need to fill in? And how much of it is just the happenstance of the cases that have happened in recent years?
I mean, give that a try. You know, when I think about, first of all, coming from outside, not knowing a whole lot about LAPD in terms of specifics, this department is still looked at as a very, very good and progressive police department. Now, I know when you're in the middle of it, you think about all the negative stuff and what's not right, okay? And that's just normal. But as a person from the outside looking in, there are a few departments that you look at as being some of the more progressive departments. LAPD is one of them. It wasn't always that case, okay? But it still is. Now, that doesn't mean that there's not work that needs to be done. There's no such thing as a perfect police department. I think it was Vince Lombardi that said that you strive toward perfection along the way, you may find excellence, you know? And that's true in our business. I think the one thing that I really, that really struck me with Ferguson, with all the stuff, even Sacramento, I mean, you name it, where we've had these controversial things take place, is that just how fragile relationships are between police and community. It doesn't take much, and that's why it's so important that we constantly work to strengthen relationships. Something bad is going to happen, and if you don't, but if you don't have strong relationships, you won't be able to weather the storm. You won't be able to go through that. And it's not just about LA. We live in a world now where we're so connected, it doesn't matter where it happens, it's as if it happened in your place, because it's on video, it's shown over and over again. I grew up in Chicago, had relatives in St. Louis, used to go down there all the time. I had no clue as to where Ferguson, Missouri was located, no clue at all I know now. But who would have thought that a small city with a police department of about fifty sworn members would change policing in America? And yet, it happened. They did. The power of social media, power of information getting out, people getting involved, those kinds of things. So, we have to look at this not just as LAPD, Philadelphia PD, we have to look at this as the law enforcement community, all of us collectively, as to how are we going to build these bonds of trust? How are we going to repair the damage that's been done over centuries? And let's face it, policing carries a lot of baggage, a lot of baggage in some communities, and it's going to take a long time to overcome it. It really is. And so, you know, we have to think of innovative ways in which, one, we can educate our police officers as to why is there more attention in this community versus another, a community of color versus another community, a poor community versus a more affluent community. So, they need to understand the history and the reasons why that happens. And then, it's one cop, one citizen at a time building those bonds, building that trust, where, you know, people have faith in that one officer that grows to, you know, more than one, maybe that entire command, and maybe at some point in time, that entire department. So, even if something bad happens in another city, think about what it would be if the citizens of this city saw that and said, "Man, that's terrible," but our cops would never do that. I mean, we're a long way from that in any city I can think of, but it's achievable, but it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take a lot of work with not just individual departments, I think, as a profession, the profession of policing, to really take this stuff seriously and start to build that kind of trust that's needed in all of our communities. So, you'll weather the storm, you had excellent leadership. I know that Charlie is retiring, but you'll pick another good chief. You've had excellent leadership over the past decade or so, and you've got a solid department here. I was very impressed in reading the report around the leadership. I don't know if it was called Leadership Academy, but there was a, when they're developing leadership, not just at the top of the organization, but at the bottom of the organization, at the entry level. That's what it's going to take, and a real firm understanding, and everybody being willing to kind of stop looking through the rearview mirror so much and start looking forward and trying to build bridges for the future.
Now, I'm still not sure I got an answer that's exactly on point. So, this is a great department. I think we all recognize that, but my question is, are there, is there one obvious thing or are there obvious things-
No.
That are shortfalls in community policing.
Sir, if there was one thing, they'd have done it. It's not that simple. It's just not that simple, and it doesn't happen overnight. And you talk about some incident that occurred before. I can, the one thing I can guarantee you here is that at some point in time in the future, something bad is going to happen again. It's the nature of the business, it's the nature of life in big cities. But we got to start somewhere, but there is no one thing. If I had to nail it down to one thing that I think would make the biggest difference the fastest, respect. The biggest complaint I received in every job I've had, it wasn't about, we talk a lot about stop data and we talk about this, that, and the other. It's the way in which people are treated during a stop. It's disrespect. It's people feeling as if they've been disrespected. If we actually had every single officer make that commitment under any, and I don't care if you lock somebody up or if you're writing a traffic citation or just trying to give people information, there's no excuse not to be respectful, none, zero. And if we could get that across, and if every single member of policing in here and elsewhere treated people with respect, you'd see the biggest difference very, very quickly in terms of attitude toward police.
If I could be so bold to add on, while also agreeing with every single word that was just said by the chief, in thinking about community policing and what are the steps that we can take, Mr. Englander, I think, said it well previously. He said, "This is not simply checking off the boxes. These problems are bigger than that, and they're longer term than that." This is about a, to me at least, a never-ending pursuit when you talk about true community policing. It's somewhere you'll never reach the end and say, "We're done. We finished. We are now community policing oriented." You will always be working toward it. So, what are the things you want to do when you work toward it? A couple of our recommendations, I think, do speak to that. We want to make sure there's sufficient time for each officer to actually have effective community engagement, so they don't feel like they don't have that as an option to actually get out and talk with their neighbors, talk with the people that they're there to serve. They need to make sure they have the resources to be able to do that. And as I mentioned before, that needs to go down, as Chief Ramsey just said, it needs to go down to every officer within the department. There are some amazing programs that this department and others around the country have with specialized units, and those are great and should continue. But true community policing philosophy makes its way down through the culture of the department, and that respect that was just talked about comes through for every single person who wears the uniform and the badge and not just ones who kind of do this on an extra basis. We also, along that front, that was our recommendation, to measure and incentivize community policing efforts, to get people throughout the department to know, this is part of the job, this is part of the culture, we want to encourage this, we want to measure it, and reward you for when you do it well, and held you accountable if you're not doing it. Those are the types of steps that we are hoping to see, but they are long-term steps, as the chief said, and it's a never-ending pursuit, so we'll keep monitoring.
Let me ask you a question. Based on this framework, based on all of the pillars and the objectives and the deep dive and looking at all of these complications and knowing that there is no perfect, because there's always room and there will always be room, and it's a fluid process, oftentimes it will always be, and the most we can hope for is two steps forward, one steps backward, and not the other way around. There's always going to be something, as you said. But in looking at all of the departments in the entire country, who, it's always easy to point out the worst, because we have statistics and data for that, but who, based on the pillars, would you suggest may be the one to aspire to the most?
I don't know, sir, if there's any one department. I think different departments are executing different aspects of the report better perhaps than some others, but I don't know of any one department that's like got it all right, and I would argue that this isn't the total answer either.
Sure. And who would you say is the best or closest to it?
I'd have to give that some thought, because I really can't. I certainly don't want to say Philadelphia, because that's where I'm from. So, I mean, I'll take that one off the table, although I think we did a pretty good job, but we're far from, far from perfect. It would depend on what aspect of it that you're looking at. I've not been asked that particular question. As far as big cities go, I was pretty impressed, believe it or not, with New York. I was there not too long ago at a meeting they had with their top command. They have these leadership sessions as well, and they're in the process now of implementing their community policing philosophy, and the way in which they're going about it is pretty much consistent with what we have here. Now, as a department, it's far from perfect too, big organization, but they're making strides. I thought Milwaukee, in terms of how they handle discipline internally, internal procedural justice, I think is values-driven, and I think that's something that others can take a look at. So, you can pull little nuggets here and there. I think Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department has made a lot of progress after a collaborative forum. A lot of departments are now sending people out there to take a look at their training, take a look at different things that they're doing out there. So, there are different departments that are doing well. There is no one that's like, you know, got it all right. There is no one that's like, you know, got it all right. I mean, I, it just, I, I, everybody's got their, their flaws.
One other question. I know, over the years, certainly at times, we had a problem with the rendering aid issue. I remember years ago, there was an incident of, uh, of, of a, a major shooter, and once, once he was gotten to and shot, basically, he lay on the ground, bleeding for half an hour, forty-five minutes. And I can't say that he might not have deserved it, but it certainly wouldn't be an appropriate action. How much better are we at that now, and how far do we have to go to, uh, deal with the, the issue of rendering aid appropriately?
There were a lot of departments that, uh, in their directives did not have that responsibility for officers, if they were involved, and officer involved shooting to me, they render aid to the person who was just shot. I'm hard-pressed to think of a department now that does not have that as part of their, of their training. And I, you have to remember, I go back many, many years, um, so things have changed tremendously. But, you know, the sanctity of life is something that is critically important, that is something you're seeing now in, 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 in policy statements, uh, in departments across the country. It is not for us to judge. I mean, if we can save a life, then save a life. That's why we have a criminal justice system to bring a person to trial. If we have to use force, if you have to, uh, shoot an individual, you have an obligation if it is to do what you can to try to get him to a hospital, uh, as quickly as possible, render whatever aid you can.
So, so, but how are, how are we doing, uh, compared to sort of that, best practices, would you say?
In the report that came to the commission in January of this year, uh, they provided an update on that, and, and I'll, I'll just read from the report, if you don't mind, sir. Uh, rendering aid, "The department, in keeping with guiding value of reverence for human life, will progress towards rendering first aid to victims, including rendering aid to subjects following a use of force when safe to do so. Although the department is unique in that the city fire department has rapid response times for emergency medical treatment, the department supports having officers available to render aid when feasible." Limitations, "The two main limitations in rendering first aid are, one, training for officers, and, two, availability of first aid equipment. Currently, officers are only equipped with a minimum required post-training, eight hours every two years, and the department is currently certifying field officers in 2018 to become compliant. And have neither the training, I'm sorry, have neither the training or the experience to deal with most trauma or first aid needs. Additionally, regular patrol officers do not have access to the necessary first aid trauma protective equipment that they would need to deal with general emergency medical needs during a shift." Cost analysis, uh, Police Standards and Training Bureau is currently providing cost estimates for the initial purchase of and ongoing maintenance for emergency medical kits for patrol officers. Implementation, once officers are trained and equipped to offer limited emergency medical services, the department would issue notice with the new expectations. Additionally, any changes to policy would follow the normal policy modification procedures." And this is one of those pieces that I mentioned earlier, that there are some stumbling blocks to, become money and time. Time to train the officers, money to train the officers, and money to buy the equipment. So I think that's the areas where there, it needs to become the priority to fully implement the 21st century policing. Bias training, for example, the bias training that we did, implicit bias training, that was all done through grants. We got two donors to give us the money, hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to train seventy-five hundred cops. What do we do with the cops who are graduating from the academy since that training has been completed? We can't let them lurk in the back, we have to figure a way to get them trained. So, at the reality of this, it's, it's expensive, because when you're training people, you either remove them from their work assignment, you send them to training, or you keep them in their work assignment, and you send them to training on overtime, on their time off. So if you take them from their normal workday, and you move them to training, you're limiting the field resources that you all want in your various councilmatic districts. The most efficient way to do it, but the most costly way to do it, is to send them on overtime. And that's that balance that any administrator has to have, is, "I have these limited resources of financial, I have this responsibility to get things done." And that's the balance that the department has to work through.
I just wanna add really quick to, one thing I don't know that, um, a lot of people realize unless they're, they've, they've actually worn the uniform, uh, they really just don't know how much training and ongoing training and post-re requirement training is required on an ongoing basis. Munitions training, or FOS training, or, uh, there's, there's so much, uh, already, and, I think we could always use more. But I think that balance and looking for that argument is critically important. And, um, and I think maybe it's narrowing down and focusing not on the seventy-five hundred all the time, or the ten thousand, and how do you get those new boots out of the academy to go through that same type of training? Maybe it's a matter of changing our FTO training, and looking at, because that's everybody will touch out of the academy and spend a, a large quality and quantity of time with our field training officers. And so that, maybe there's places, and, and again, not looking for recommendations or discussion, but I think you hit the nail on the head, is that balance, is do we take officers off the street? And, and I don't know that between, uh, ARTC trade, between, uh, EVOC updates, between, we've gotta go through, every time we go through a policy on, right now, we just went through some major changes, not just here in LA, but in California, um, on tracking and high-speed pursuits, and pursuits in general. And so every time there's a major policy shift, that's another training. And so there is, there's a lot. And, um, and so that, I think, that's always a complicated piece.
You know, if I can just make a quick comment here, and I'm a little reluctant to do it, because that, you know, I'm not, I don't understand the, you know, the different laws here in California, so forth. We're not talking about cops performing surgery in the middle of the street. We're talking about basic stuff you can do to stop the bleeding. For an example, every officer in Philly carries tourniquets. If somebody has a wound to an extremity, leg, arm, whatever, you put the tourniquet on. It actually saved lives of police officers that got shot, as well, by the way. Having compression bandages, so if it's a chest wound, you could at least do that to try to stop the bleeding until the ambulance can arrive. And in many cases, our guys are trained to put them in, we call it scoop and run, we put them in a car, and we get them to a hospital.
Yeah, we've done that this year, we call them web kits, I think.
And so what, what I'm saying is, that I understand the operational considerations for training. But again, you, you, you have to think about, what is it that you want them to do? What do you wanna equip them with? So that if the situation calls for it, maybe you can make a difference. Maybe you can't, but maybe you can make a difference. And so that's all, that's all I'm saying. You're not gonna ever get up to a EMT type of, I mean, that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about just basic stuff that you can do right on the street, real quick, get them to a hospital, and maybe they don't bleed out, maybe they live.
You know, you talked about, uh, bias training and things of that nature. Do we just have that at the academy, period? Do they train that? When, do they?
They receive that as part of their basic training, they'll receive that. The implicit bias training we had was an additional training that all members of the department went through, but through the academy, and the department can speak better to this than I can. They do receive implicit bias training through various domains, learning domains, and throughout the academy time.
Did you wanna jump in, Mrs. Smith?
No, ju, uh, uh, like I said, the department can probably answer better, but they have made efforts to incorporate elements of anti-bias training, fair and impartial policing training, into multiple different areas of their, uh, ongoing training and in-service training. So they've tried to, uh, modify other trainings that they're doing already to include elements of fair and impartial policing and anti-bias.
Okay, and I know Mr. Kretz wants to ask something, but before I call on you, and I still have some people I wanna call up, uh, Paul, discipline. You know, one of the problems I know that we are having here is because of the lack of trust, there's not faith, by some, where it relates to the disciplinary process. When you implemented, uh, some of these changes, was there a change in the way people viewed, let's say, what DC did discipline-wise, or what Philadelphia did discipline-wise? Because it just, that, we, we, I'm just curious, what did you do to make the regular folk feel as though that this process was a fair process and that justice? So, I mean, if you could respond to that, Chief.
I'll respond, and I don't think we were able to do very much. We have a very strong union contract, I had a lot of conversations with our union leadership, and, um, to try to make any significant changes in the process, uh, was, was not something we were able to accomplish, unfortunately. We do have a discipline matrix and all that sort of thing. But I think there are still some that feel that the, um, the process is not fair. And I would argue that I, over my career, I've seen some decisions that just defy logic, quite frankly, um, in terms of either the discipline is administered, or even having it overturned at some point in time. Uh, it kinda cuts both ways. I think what's unique here is you have a union that's actually looking to try to do something different. And don't underestimate just how unique that is, that is very unique, and I applaud them for that. Um, because there are very few unions that would want to have civilians actually reviewing those kinds of cases as opposed to sworn.
It's, it's just hard for us to, to market that. Many of us that sit down and, and, and talk to labor, uh, recognize that they're more progressive than the average person might think, but maybe we need to have a conversation about, uh, how we can do a better job, Craig, in letting people know. I think part of our problem is not letting people know what we're doing and what the conversation is, and, and I view that as a problem. But Mr. Kretz, I'm gonna have you come up, then I'm looking for Melanie Ochoa to come up and say a, a, a few words. Did you wanna say something?
Yes, Mr. President.
You got that look in your hand, that's your eyes, yeah.
Well, in my, in my former life, I was a police chief in two police departments, fifteen years of my career as a police chief. I imposed a significant amount of discipline over that career of people. And, and I think the way you have to do that as a chief of police is be fair and consistent. And when you're not consistent with all things being equal, that's when this imbalance occurs in an organization. It's about trust in the leadership, it's about trust in the process, it's about procedural justice, it's about imposing discipline one time. And you, you made a mistake, this is the discipline you received, and now we move on. We move on and give you a second chance. If you never get a second chance, what's the use in rehabilitating? So I think it's all about being fair, consistent, having trust in an organization, trusting your leader, and trusting your leader will do the right thing, but yet, the leader won't exercise discipline in the organization.
And I just had a two-second thing to add back on the rendering aid piece. I don't know that I'm talking about necessarily getting to perfection, where we're doing all the training and making sure every single officer has a certain level of, of medical ability, but I think the, the key toe in the water is to at least make sure that everyone knows the expectation is that you try to keep this person alive. Because if you use the, the example that, that I used, although it's sort of back in the bad old days, the fact that somebody very visibly was on the ground bleeding out on television cameras, and the person just sat there for a half an hour, forty-five minutes. Our officers need to be trained at least to that extent that they know it's not acceptable. At a minimum, they have to call the fire department and get an ambulance out there and get an EMT to, to, to deliver emergency medical response right away. And, uh, I know at least at one point, that wasn't the case. So, uh, hopefully, we, we move in that direction at a minimum, and at a maximum, we, we provide enough budgeting to, uh, give some decent level of medical training to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Melanie, you wanna go ahead?
Melanie Ochoa with the ACLU of Southern California. The Inspector General's Office should take a more active role in monitoring police discipline and reporting back to the public. The IG's Best Practices Report endorsed increasing its role to conduct ongoing analysis of disciplinary outcomes, but this has been a longstanding directive. The Christopher Commission in 1991 advised that the IG should audit the disciplinary system at least twice a year and track Board of Rights proceedings carefully. That goal has not been realized over the past two and a half decades. Tracking Board of Rights outcomes, auditing hearings to make sure the outcomes do not conflict with the evidence, and tracking voting patterns between officers and civilians and reporting back to the public should be a priority for this new inspector general and monitored by the city council. Separately, Council President Weston asked about community outreach and soliciting input, and in response, Mr. Teefang mentioned the drones, but that is an, an example of what not to do. The overwhelming response to drones was negative, over ninety percent. Soliciting public input, then refusing to meaningfully consider and respond to that input only damages community police relations and agates progress towards procedural justice.
We got work to do. Thank you for coming. And I mean that when I say we have work to do. Well, anyway, uh, if I could get Chief McCarthy, Chief Peters, and Assistant Chief, just come on up for a minute, I wanna ask you guys something. If we could let them through the, uh... Am I missing a chief?
We can find another one.
No, you'll have to do. Okay, so, I guess, it, 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 at the end of the day, it falls to you guys to follow the, the instructions of the commission and the chief or what have you. What, what I wanted to do was get a quick feel from you guys about some of these new policies that, uh, were discussed earlier. How do you think they're going? Is there anything that we can do to help you? Or do you just think it doesn't make sense, or? I wanted to at least get you to engage, so you may wanna start off, or?
So, if I could start off, I'm George Vegas, Office of Administrative Services, and, uh, we fully embrace, uh, these six pillars, wholeheartedly. There isn't a, a pillar that we don't embrace, from transparency to public trust to legitimacy to the issue of policy and oversight. Uh, when we look at the issue of community policing and crime reduction, uh, training and education, officer wellness and safety, all of these issues, we fully embrace, and we have, uh, a number of initiatives in different aspects, uh, of our organization, and they're all embedded and included in our strategic plan, uh, as we move forward in the organization. So, I wanted to start with the, the spirit of, of that. Uh, as it relates to the specifics, you know, the, the most important and most comprehensive issue that came up out of, uh, from this was the issue of, uh, use of force. Um, and I think that we embraced that. It took us a while in terms of meeting with, uh, the Police Protective League, uh, having discussions with the community, and coming up with a policy that we did amend, I believe it's 2016, and we amended that, our use of force policy, to include and to mandate the issue of de-escalation. We then came up with a de-escalation directive, tactical directive, and from that directive, it's now been embedded into, uh, training. We've done two different iterations of, uh, use of force update training that included incorporated, uh, de-escalation specifically, so that we can address, uh, address that issue. And it's gonna be continuously evolving, we're in the process of the next stage of the evolution of that, uh, of that de-escalation training. So when we look at those types of issues, we're moving aggressively, and we're moving forward. I know the, the whole issue of, uh, implicit bias training, uh, procedural justice training, and we have different names that we go by, that we use because of, you know, peace officer standards and training, but essentially, all of those components have been in the past and are now included in the tribe of training, uh, that we do. Uh, when it looks, when we look to, uh, things like, uh, transparency, we're in the process now of make, uh, we're gonna come close to, and I think Chief McCarthy can speak to in further detail, in terms of the disclosure of, uh, body worn video and, and during a critical incident, so that's coming up, uh, in, in the near future as well. So I guess in short, I'd like to say, before I turn it over to the others, is that we fully embrace this report, these recommendations, specifically the spirit of each and every one of those, and we're moving forward assertively to make sure that they're all implemented. Uh, but like, uh, the chief said, Chief Ramsey said, this is an ongoing process, it's an evolution, and it's gonna continuously evolve. Uh, very, a, a number of years ago, we were going from, uh, a model in policing to, uh, what was called community policing, we're now moving to a model of relationship policing. And so we're gonna continually evolve as policing evolves. Uh, and then lastly, to say of, of what is it that you can do for us, quite frankly, it's the issue of money. The issue of money, funding, for us to be able to put, uh, the number of officers in the streets that's, that you would like to see in each of your districts... streets that you would like to see in each of your districts, we need to look to, in the perfect world, having closer to 12,500 officers out in the field, so that we can provide you that service that's necessary, specifically as it relates to the community policing component of having relationships with each and every person that we have out there when we encounter them. And we're not there yet. There's also needs that we have in terms of technology and funding needs that we have that are important for us to be able to, you know, produce the body worn video, disclose that out, so that everybody has that.
Yes, Deputy Chief Debbie McCarthy, and I've been with the police department for 30 years, ad professional standards for five. As Chief Viegas said, we are completely open and ready to implement any changes in terms of discipline or force. I currently oversee Internal Affairs and Force Investigation Division. As Chief Viegas said, in terms of transparency, we're in the process of establishing protocols for release of video following an officer-involved shooting. Also, as he indicated, the need for the proper equipment to make sure that the best information is gathered and ultimately presented to the community is critical. If you understand video at all, it becomes extremely complicated, and the need for proper equipment to fulfill that process is very important. In terms of Internal Affairs, we are always open and ready to make any changes. Like I said, I've been there for five years. I've made a lot of changes over the years, as I think you indicated earlier, this is a very big ship, we always have work to do. We do that on a daily basis, we are, we work on transparency, we work on making sure that the process is fair and equitable. It's not a perfect system, I won't pretend it is, but we do do our best to make sure that is equitable for the officers and for the community.
Thank you. You know, I just view this, members, as a unique opportunity. We're going through the process of bringing in a new chief. We have been instructed by the residents of this city to deal with discipline and the board of rights, one way or the other. So I just view this as an opportunity for us to make some change that's real, and I just hope that we don't blow this moment.
I agree, sir, I think that out of every, unfortunately, out of every time something bad happens, you can find something good that should come from it. If we don't, then we've lost an opportunity, and so I completely agree with that.
Thanks, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Peters, I'm the commanding officer of Police Sciences and Training Bureau, so I represent the training arm of this discussion. Very encouraged by the comments of Mr. Teefank earlier relative to the training challenge, I couldn't agree more. I see it as the foundation to everything that we do. It's kind of like building a house, you've got to have a strong foundation, and we effort to do that, continue to do that, both in our recruit training and also in our in-service training. It's extremely busy, we have a number of classes and training opportunities that we offer for our personnel, and we look forward to being forward-looking and progressive in terms of what we're doing in those regards. And I think one of the, as an example of that, one of the things that I'm most proud of is a flagship program that perhaps you might have heard of, it's our police PSL program. And what we do in that, the PSL program, is we're bringing back young officers at various increments in their life cycle as a police officer. So when they graduate from the academy after six months, we bring them back five months later as a group, because they've already have built-in relationships, a comfort level in their peers. And we kind of hit the reset button in some respects to reexamine some of the things that may have been more theoretical when they were in the academy, and now after having five months in the field, how does that theory meet reality? And have discussions relative to this. This is a program that we started, PSL One, Police Sciences Leadership, in January of 2016. We have over 600 officers that have been through PSL One at this point, and we just have kicked off PSL Two, which is the next phase, when we bring them back at the three-year increment. And then the final phase will be PSL Three, will be at five years that we bring them back in a similar setting. And so we're able to revisit topics of fair and impartial policing, de-escalation, on and on and on, in terms of the topics that are there. So from that perspective, we are being progressive in how we're looking at this, and ultimately, with the result of having better officers that are building trust, as Chief Viegas talked about, is this transition from a community policing or community policing-based idea to really a relationship-based policing perspective. And moving from a transactional relationship when we encounter people to a transformational interaction when we meet people. And part of that, you know, understanding and how do we get there, some of it was pioneered by Commander Flores, who's in the room with us tonight, through days of dialogue, and those type of opportunities for us to sit down, not with command officers, but with rank-and-file police officers, meeting with people from the community, and having those types of interactions to get to know individual, people as individuals, and understanding it's not just a cop who wears a uniform and a badge, and not maybe somebody from our particular neighborhood. But that's how we start getting at those understandings, and that's what we're pushing forward in our training.
Thank you. Well, one of the things that, you talked about days of dialogue, we have been working with your department because we're trying to put together an Embrace L.A. program, April 16th through the 20th, over 100 dinners throughout the city of Los Angeles. And it's my understanding that there's been a commitment by the department to try to make sure there's at least a police officer at every one of these Embrace L.A. dinners. I think that that's critical, and I just want to bring that up while I was thinking about it, because I'm fading quickly. But I don't know if any other members have anything that they want to say right now, I do want to call on another person from the public. But we will be giving this some more thought, and I will quickly be asking questions of my colleagues that are on the committee to get recommendations of how we can and should proceed. And trust me, if I was more like myself, I had a series of other questions. But like I said, this is, if I could make it another few minutes, I'll be proud of myself. But I just want to make it crystal clear how serious we are, trying to come up with a way to figure this out. That I look forward to working with the league and the command staff and the community to try to come up with something that makes sense for all of us. And if everybody's committed to that end, I think then anything is possible. So with that said, if I could call on Amin Al Sharif, Sharaf? Sir, I apologize if I messed up your name.
Not a problem. Good evening, Council President, Committee, my name is Amin Al Sharaf.
I said it right!
Al Sharaf, you got it?
Hey!
I'm an attorney here in Los Angeles and also a co-president of the Muslim Bar Association of Southern California.
Thank you for coming.
And I wanted to thank the committee for having this discussion, facilitating it, and I look forward to an ongoing discussion and ongoing dialogue, especially as it relates to the community and to our community as well. So with that, thank you.
Well, one of the things that I'm thinking about is kind of based on something that Melanie said earlier. I think I need to, we need to come up with a way that individuals can get recommendations to this committee, be it online, be it some document that you'd want to send, things that we could talk about in committee, things that we could talk about individually with the labor and with the command staff. I want to try to get more people involved, and I want to, we'll come back, and I'm going to get answers to your questions about, you know, a report that happened 100 years ago and why are we not, or are we, you know, adhering to this? So with that said, if, members, if you don't have any other, if there are no other questions, at least on this first hearing, again, let me thank everybody for coming. Chief, where, Chief, thank you. We may need to call on you again, or some other member from the task force, but I do, on behalf of this committee, want to thank you very much, I want to thank everybody who came. Hey, guys, this committee is...
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Pardon me, sir.
I got 47 seconds left of being alive, so...
Were items wanted to be, committee's action would be to continue?
We're going to continue this.
Okay.
Okay. And there was no required action on this. I don't intend on some quick knee-jerk action, this is going to take some work and some creativity. So again, thank everybody for coming, this committee's adjourned. Yeah, I will feel better.